Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education. It is Monday, December 15th, and we have a special holiday treat this evening. We will begin our board meeting with the singers from Coit School and from Ottawa Hills High School.
Very nice. Do the flag first?
The flag.
We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance first. Please rise and join us in Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Anna, man.
Rousing.
They stopped after years.
(singing) Oh, say can you see, fireflies are bright, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, o'er the skies and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the red lights we watched, where so gallantly streaming, and the rocket is ready, the buzzers singing there, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say the zags' stars sang November yet ways, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Oh, thank you so much.
Presents.
Thank you.
Presents.
Lovely.
Thank you.
Very much.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Beautiful. Did everybody?
All right.
Thank you.
That is your transpiration.
Thank you, Deborah and Vanessa. Those kids were amazing.
Awesome.
Mr. Ross, can you please call the roll?
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Dr. Reynolds.
Present.
Mr. Ross, present. Ms. Slate.
Present.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Mr. LaGranne.
Yes.
Reverend Mathias.
Here.
Pastor Moody.
Here.
And President Faul.
Present.
We have a quorum of nine.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Some moves.
Support for that?
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, thank you. First on our agenda are our celebrations.
Dr. Faul and members of the board, I'd like to ask Kirk Johnson to come forward, please.
'Tis the season.
It is.
Dr. Faul, Superintendent Neal, and the board members. Wow, wasn't that heartwarming there?
Absolutely. Wonderful.
Makes you want to join the chorus. You know, I was first a musician. Will always be a musician. You know, it's good to always hear warm stories around this time of year, and especially with our young people. You know, we often know, oftentimes, young people don't always receive the positive attention that they need. Oftentimes, it's negative or something that we don't wish to hear. But I think tonight, you're going to hear something that's going to really warm your heart, and it really is a testament to when parents' expectations for kids to be good people, and then the school district and the community supports and reinforces those expectations around being good people. It's no wonder that they can always do amazing things. And so, tonight, all the way from Union High School, under the leadership of Mr. Carl Nelson, Justin Walker, and under the developing leadership of a young varsity coach, Brandon Guyton, you're going to hear of a heartwarming story about some student athletes, and what will not amaze you, because you all have high expectations for our students, but it will please you to know that they are delivering on those expectations when they're not on the court, or when they're not in the classroom, but when they're out in the community. So without any further ado, I want Mr. Walker to come up and introduce who he has brought with him today.
Well, good evening, President Faul, Superintendent Neal, and the rest of our board members. Thank you again for allowing me to come visit you all and have the opportunity to speak about our basketball program and the young men that have impacted our community and our city in a very special way. And it really was under the direction and the leadership of Coach Brandon Guyton that these young men continue to grow. They really embody everything that you will want in these student body, and they represent Grand Rapids Public Schools to the highest honor, and I am very appreciative of them to have them in our building. And I can say without a doubt that Coach Guyton's leadership and his way, and what he expects from them, where he carries his self, his hard work and dedication towards them is starting to rub off, and his sacrifice in teaching them what it means to be a good citizen wore off on them, and they were able to do something very special and make a great impact and represented Union High School and the Grand Rapids Public Schools with high honor. So I'm going to turn it over to Coach Guyton and ask him to come up, and he will have a little bit more of the details of the story that I'm sure some of you are familiar with.
Good evening, Dr. Faul, Superintendent Neal, and the rest of the board members. Brandon Guyton, I'm the head boys' basketball coach and youth advocate specialist at Union High School, and just want to tell you a story that took place with our student athletes that warmed my heart. I'm a Grand Rapids Public School product, so oftentimes, a lot of our kids take hits and get negative feedback. But as Mr. Johnson said, this was our expectation, and this was no surprise for me, Mr. Walker, Mr. Johnson, or Mr. Nelson. Around 11:30 at night, I was on my way to bed. I received a phone call from a parent, and I missed the phone call. Now usually, I don't return calls that late, but I was concerned. As I answered the phone, it was Ms. Christian Delgado, Kejren Davis' mother. She said, "You won't believe what happened." And I told her what happened. Now, in the same time as she was telling me this, Kejren sent a text message and said, "You wouldn't believe what me, Sergio, and Najee did." So in the back of my head, I was a little worried.
Don't tell me more.
They both were coming at me. So what happens is, a lady starts to get low on energy, and she asks for candy. Sergio so happened to have candy on him from his ACT tutoring, so he offered her a piece of chocolate, and she took it. And now these kids stay on the southeast side of Grand Rapids, and with adults being on the bus, these young men took it upon themselves to go out their way to help this young lady. This lady was having a diabetic seizure. She was lightheaded, low on energy. Our kids was low on bus rides. What happened was, she says she felt like she couldn't walk. So as Kejren's about to get off the bus, he asked, "Was she able to make it home okay?" She said she wouldn't be okay. Kejren told me he felt it in his heart that he couldn't just let her go home. These kids go out their way, all the way to 44th Street, and at the time, it was bad weather conditions. It was about three inches of snow. So Kejren didn't have a bus ticket, so Sergio said, "I can put you on the bus." Kejren, Sergio, and Najee gets off the bus, and as this lady's slowly blacking out, Kejren picks this lady up and put her on his back. And as he's walking, he takes a 15-minute walk, take a 15-minute walk to take her home. The other two young men was holding her bags, and they took this 15-minute journey just to get to her destination, dropped her off at home, said thanks, and they wanted to make sure she was safe. They all three got home between 11:30, 12 o'clock. And as Ms. Chris was telling me, when I hung up the phone with her, Kejren sent me this long text message. Instantly, I got emotional, I got teary-eyed, it was a touching story. I shared it on my Facebook, and the next morning, I had got a phone call from WZZM and Fox 17, and they said that they wanted to share the story. The kids didn't do this for attention at all. They did it because they cared about a citizen's life. They didn't have to do it. There was others on the bus that went out their way. They made a sacrifice, and they did what a human was supposed to do. So for those three young men, we are extremely proud of them. And as I said before, that was an expectation, it's not a surprise to no one in the room that our students in Grand Rapids Public Schools can conduct themselves in a right manner.
Excellent. Come on, Brandon.
Kejren Davis, Najee Perkins, and Sergio Diaz, can you please come up?
Absolutely. All right.
Well, you know the intent. We're going to send you all the news links so that you can watch it at your leisure. It was a great news story, actually. It's not often that we highlight young people in the community, and so when they're from Grand Rapids Public Schools, it's a testament to the support between the family, the community, and the schools, and what they can do. So we really thank you, and we appreciate that you allowed us to come share the story with you. Thank you.
Good job, you guys. Excuse me. Dr. Faul. Mr. Johnson. Can we shake the boys' hands? Yes, absolutely.
They're coming around. They're coming around.
Come on. Listen, all basketball players.
Callie, I hope this works for you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for everything. Good job. The whole team. Guys supporting you. That's nice, sweeties. Good job, Brandon.
Says a lot about you today.
Thanks a lot, you guys. Thank you. Awesome. Must be they've got something better to do than sit through that after this point. Appreciate the team spirit. We talk about spirit a lot.
Say something.
Go ahead, Dr. Baker.
Coach, before you take off.
Brandon.
Just, I don't know why people leave so quickly after we shake their hands. Because it's going to be a lot more fun. But anyway, I just wanted to say, you know, it's really wonderful that these young people did this, but I think I said to you real quick, but what's really impressive is that it must be connected to you, because that was what they, that was the story that they needed to let you know. They called you to tell you that story. Their mother called you to tell you that story. So it must say something about who you are and who you are to them, so appreciate that.
Great point, Dr. Baker. Look at my one with the notes here.
Michigan School Band.
Dr. Faul, I would like to ask Carolyn Evans to come forward, please. Kurt.
I don't have the news behind me. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Faul and members of the board. Superintendent Neal. It is one of the greatest honors that instrumentalists can receive in the state of Michigan is to be identified to participate in the Michigan Band and Orchestra Association. We have two students that have been selected. And I'd like to introduce those students at this time, but before I do so, well, maybe I'll do this first. I'd like to begin by introducing Carl Faul. He would please stand up.
I didn't know that. I didn't know that. I didn't see Carol.
Freshman at City Middle School, high school, rather. He was elected because, to be a part of the all orchestra, because of his violin ability. I also want you to know that he is the son of the proud mother, doctor and president, Wendy Faul.
Awesome, Carl.
We also have a senior at City who was selected to participate as part of the Allstate Jazz Band as a guitarist. His name is Chris Kelly. He also was a part of the concert band as a trombonist. Is he in the audience?
All right. Nice.
If his parents are in the audience, if they would also stand as well.
Dr. Faul, stand, please.
I would like to thank these gentlemen for making Grand Rapids Public School awfully proud.
Good job.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and shake the board's hand?
He's like, "Don't." Carol's fine with it. Don't squeeze your card, right?
Good job, man.
Congratulations. We will have new young kids coming up, because now we do it at so many of our other schools, so it's going to grow, continue to grow.
We have so many celebrations.
Right, so if we, this is good. So Carol and Callie, if you can present the second celebration, please.
I'd just like to say, I'm here in place of Maggie Malone. She had an emergency in her family. But let's begin with the celebration. Each year, Grand Rapids Public School participates in the development of a holiday card. We ask students across our districts, our district, to create the card. This year is unusual. It is different, because we included technology. This year's holiday card, I think this was on the urging of Superintendent Neal, is an E-card. And it will feature the artwork of 19 students from Coit Middle School, and I want to make sure that I name all of these schools, because the students are here in the audience, and I don't want to miss them. We have students here from Caesar Chavez. If they would stand, please, and their parents. Coit Creative Arts Academy, if you would also stand with your parents. Dickinson K8, if you would stand. Innovation Central. Martin Luther King Academy. Developmental Center. Mulick Park. We have the parents here. Sherwood Park. And Southwest Community Campus. We're going to ask that you view the electronic card at this time. We'd like to mention that it is friendly to our environment, and it is representative of 21st century communications and skills.
That's really good.
Thank you.
Mrs. Evans.
Yes.
Can you have them come down as well, so we can?
Okay. I'd like to mention that the music was provided by Coit Creative Arts Honors Choir. All of the students have made us so very proud. I'm going to ask that they stand, and we're going to give you the opportunity to come around and shake the board's hand. When you're done, the superintendent has certificates for you in the back. You're certainly welcome to say, but you don't have to. We have certificates and just a small treat for you. So if you stand at this time and come around.
Another round of applause. This is what, this is what school is about.
Good job.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Awesome. It's awesome. Wow. That's your voice.
Very much. Good job.
Who was the wise guy?
You'll have a few.
This cast got more dramatic.
Right. Yeah, at one point, he just had sort of a splint, and then just ace wrapped. This is bad news to have you, the thumbs spiked. We've lost Mr. Ross, but... Well, next on our agenda is the reports from our student representatives. Mr. Jefferson.
All right, okay, you guys can hear me. All right, I just want to start off by saying that was a really great thing about student athletes, and that's probably our main goal in athletics, is to make people better young men and women, and better overall people. And it really made me proud, because being a student athlete and being a product in the making of GRPS, it really warmed my heart. And it's crazy, because I can see some of the guys I'm around daily doing the same thing, and I just really appreciated that. And also, we had our student leadership meeting again. Again, we talked about uniforms, and we're really trying to come up with great ideas to discuss the flexibility of them, and we're still waiting on that. It's still a topic in development, so...
It's still in development. I'm waiting for them.
Yeah, so we're going to come up with something regarding the flexibility, and hopefully you guys will compensate, you know? So, thank you.
Okay, I'd just like to follow up on what Givante said about that awesome story that we heard earlier, and just want to say, I did not, this was not the first time that I had heard about this story. I didn't hear about it from anybody who was on the team. I heard about it just from normal people at my school who were really amazed by this and thought it was a great thing. So this has really done a lot to, you know, just improve our image. I'm happy about it. Following up on what Givante said, we did have our meeting today. It was really productive, got the views of a lot of different schools. And one of the other things I'd like to say is, we also talked about attendance, and one of the really interesting things that Givante brought up is that often we use measures that are designed to provide, or designed to punish students for not coming to school, and that's obviously a vital part of making sure students do come to school. But he also mentioned that another way to do this, to supplement this, is with providing incentives for students to come to school, just through events that students might miss out on or something. And he said Central had implemented this recently, and it had great success with it, so I thought it would just be nice to share that and say, "Maybe that'd be something that we could look at on a wider scale to supplement the existing policies we have."
Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Next on the agenda is public comment for board agenda item.
There are none.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Secretary's report.
Just a couple of notes for my board colleagues. Advising you of the Grand Rapids Urban League, Dr. Martin Luther King Corporate Breakfast. Next month, on January 19th, we're all invited to attend. Table has been reserved for us, and if you're interested, make sure you RSVP through Julie in the superintendent's office as well. Also, coming up February 7th, 6:00 PM at DeVos Place, there is the Giants Awards and Banquet honoring and celebrating African-American individuals and organizations that are recognized for exceptional contributions shaping the history and quality of life of greater Grand Rapids. As well, if you want to attend that, RSVP through Julie at the superintendent's office. Also, I forgot to tell you that Martin Luther King Breakfast is at 7:30 AM at the Steelcase Town Hall.
Mr. Ross?
7:30 AM on the 19th.
Superintendent's report. I would like to ask John Hemholt to come forward, Dr. Faul, and members of the board.
See, now you're all getting me in trouble with John on this one. You know that, right? Madam President, Superintendent, members of the board, it's an honor for me to be here to share what is a fitting tribute and resolution to an outstanding board member and friend as well. He's just now getting it. I was just looking at him. I, it's, I've had the personal pleasure of working with John, particularly in the legislative, so it's, I appreciate the opportunity to read this and to present it. So, "Grand Rapids Public Schools Resolution to Mr. John O'Connor. Whereas Mr. John O'Connor was elected to the Grand Rapids Board of Education, began his term of office on July 1st, 2010, and his term was extended to December 31st, 2014 to accommodate the change in the school board election law until his term was completed from the board on December 31st, 2014. Whereas Mr. O'Connor's term of office was 4.5 years, and whereas during Mr. O'Connor's term of office, he served as treasurer of the board 2013 and 2014, and whereas Mr. O'Connor also served on the Finance Committee as chairperson, Legislative Committee as chairperson, Ad-Hoc Policy Review Committee as chairperson, Ad-Hoc Policy Review Committee for the Superintendency Value- Committee for the Superintendency Valuation, Ad hoc Sustainability Policy Committee, and as treasurer of the board 2013 and 14. And whereas, Mr. O'Connor also served as Legislative Committee alternate 2010, 2011, City Board Liaison Committee alternate. And whereas, Mr. O'Connor contributed his knowledge and expertise to the board in a forthright manner in discussions and deliberations and continuously demonstrated his commitment to the children of the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Grand Rapids Board of Education and Superintendent Teresa Weatherall Neal, on behalf of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, do hereby congratulate and commend Mr. John O'Connor for his service to the school district and the children of Grand Rapids and wish him all the best in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. O'Connor and a copy be placed on file. Thank you.
Do we get to vote on that?
That wasn't in the consent agenda. Anything else on that report, Madam Superintendent?
That is it. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda are action items. First, we have a first reading of Policy 3200. Do I have a motion for approval of first reading? Support for that?
Support.
Board member discussion deliberation.
I'd go first. I understand we talked about this at our previous meeting. I believe the intent behind this, which is to perhaps streamline and make it easier, facilitate grants that come to us from the community. And I think everyone around this table is keenly aware of how important those are to the school, especially since every time the state wants to do something, they seem to think that they ought to just raid the education fund to do it. That being said, in particular in looking at this policy, I, I'm not inclined, I don't, as drafted, I guess I would, I would like to suggest or discuss a change to it before I could wholeheartedly support it. And that is, there's a provision in there that for, in order to bring it, to bring a grant proposal up for full discussion by the board, that there has to be support of three people. So to put that in layman's terms, that's sort of like saying to get something off the consent agenda on this issue, you'd need a quorum of three. In general, I tend to think that discussion is good and transparency is good. And even if one of the nine of us had a particular problem with something, I'd like the group to discuss it. And so I, I don't, I'm not inclined to support a provision that requires any of us to first go off and lobby and see if we can find a couple of votes to support us before we can actually bring something forward for a larger discussion. Not, not a big fan of that as a general precedent for a mechanism. As it stands, of course, we could take anything off the consent agenda at a meeting. So this policy, I think, would be a departure from that general mechanism. And so I would, I would strongly prefer to have this amended, that language exercised. Otherwise, I, I support the general idea.
Just to give a larger context before I ask for other responses to Mr. Legrand, the, the policy itself is not typical of board policies. It came about to try to get a balance between board, we did not want the board to be in an end process where a grant had gone forward, there had been approval, and the board was in the position to simply say no at the very end of the process. As a result, the flip happened with our foundations, where if we have a public vetting ahead of time, now the foundations are in a public place to say no. So as discussed in the work session, this was an attempt to find a middle ground. So it does not go into consent agenda, just a little bit of a correction. There's just required communication from, from the superintendent to communicate in writing the pursuit of a grant. So it would not go before the board in consent agenda, it would be just a written approval and understood. In developing the three person, that's to give a sense that there's a larger problem to bring it to a level of public discussion. Because by bringing it to public discussion, you open that door of having, so that, that was the rationale behind having the three person versus a one person bringing it into public discussion. So, context for that. Response, questions, concerns?
I would support the, the change from three to one, just as a, you know, if it's non-controversial, it shouldn't be a big deal. If I, if any of us have concern about something, I don't see there being any reason not to want to have a discussion about it. Again, I don't want to play protectionist here, but we've, we've seen results in the past that we weren't happy with because of decisions made. And I don't think that any of these policies are necessarily set up for today. It's good policy moving forward, so.
David?
A follow-up, a follow-up concern, and that is what I just, as I was speaking, I said, well, I wouldn't want to have to go off and lobby and get another couple of votes. We all know, we're all living with, you know, a good mechanism, which is the Open Meetings Act, which is supposed to discourage us going off and cutting secret deals and having secret discussions and only having our discussions in public. And to the extent that anything which requires that kind of quorum would, would encourage us to potentially get anywhere near Open Meetings Act problems, I think that, I find that problematic. I'm not saying it does, it doesn't, because it only requires three. But I could easily see a situation where if I didn't get the answer I wanted from the first two people, I'd go off and talk to the whole board before, and then all of a sudden you got an Open Meetings Act problem. So I think that's an argument against it.
I just, from a purely practical, like how does this, how would this work if, if in fact a grant proposal was sent out by the superintendent? Then would it have to be something I would have to, how would I go about getting three votes? Our three concerns, would that be three emails? Would that be three people at a board meeting? Like how does, what's the practical implications for process on that? How does that?
This isn't the only policy where it's requesting more than one board member to make an agenda item, and that's a pretty common practice on boards. And I'm not sure, I'm trying to remember, I know that there are other policies that we have that require more than one board member to make it a public agenda item. Uh, just call a special meeting, to call a special meeting, because I know we had to look up that policy when we.
We did that once.
Called a special meeting at one point. I know that one for sure.
What was the number? Was it three or two?
It was three, I believe. It was three. Yeah, I would, I feel strongly that I think the three is appropriate. Again, if it rises to the level of public discussion, then it opens a whole other process. And if you have one person on the board that has the ability to do that, then I think it tips the balance, given the level of importance it is to pursue these grants without a public vetting in the process. We do have a meeting, but.
I think if there is some precedent, and maybe Ms. Pitts can speak to it, I don't know, putting on her spot right this minute, but it makes sense too then that we don't have somebody blowing open something that really is still in process and in the works also, then bringing it up and creating more of a controversy. And then there's in number one, grant procurement, three rows into the blue underline, grant greater than $100,000 and it's grant, you need to remove the H. There's just a typo.
Okay.
Those two.
Again, I, I think that normal procedure, I think you'd be hard pressed to find other boards that even have any.
Right.
Policy restrictions on grant procurement. And it was never meant to become an overreach of the board. It was simply meant to have the board have a mechanism with which to deny pursuit if it was, if it reached some level of conflict, so you can have a balance of powers with the board and superintendent. So this, this would be my, my argument for three people, that you don't want to have an overreach of the board in this process.
Has there been a concern? Has there been a problem that we're correcting or?
No.
I don't need to go through that.
Right.
I don't need to know what the problem was, I just need to know if.
No, in the past, there has been a problem, not currently, there's been the flip side of the problem with foundations expressing concern regarding a public vetting before the process began. So we've had the flip side of the problem now, we've had our earlier problems in the past history. So it's an attempt to try to come back and correct it and have the appropriate mechanism that creates a balance of power, but does not put the superintendent and foundations in an awkward position.
Yeah, so just to walk through how it's currently done, if, without this change, currently if, if the superintendent proposes a, a grant larger than 100,000, that is currently being typically brought through what Finance Committee and then into a consent agenda, and then its vetting likely happens in Finance Committee. This change would require the superintendent to send an email to all of the board members.
Written communications.
Okay, written communication of some sort that says, okay, I'm going to pursue this grant, does anybody have a problem with it? And then theoretically, individually, we should choose whether or not we have a problem with this and communicate that to the superintendent or to the board president. Is that what this does? I'm just trying to walk through the actual, okay. Okay, and so, so Mr. Legrand's point could be if I have a problem with it, I could call up him and one other person and say, why don't you have a problem with this?
I would like to put this on the agenda, would you support that? You don't have to deliberate it, you just make a request. You see the report?
And no decision is getting made, other than the fact that the full board discusses it. Okay.
Again, it should rise to a level of extraordinary problem. It's, it's, you know, typically, this should be the superintendent's discretion. This should not be a board discretionary item. It's giving a mechanism for the board in an extraordinary case to say, you know, no, stop this pursuit, so.
Wouldn't that normally have come through the Finance Committee? I mean, would it come through the Finance Committee?
It normally wouldn't, I mean, previous to this, to.
I mean, previous.
Like eight years ago, before we passed the first one? It wouldn't come at all.
Right.
Wouldn't come at all before the board.
But now it comes before the Finance Committee.
It wasn't even required that the superintendent communicate to the board. So this is stronger. Three years ago, we passed a, we passed a policy.
So this is, this is backing away from that full, full public discussion. I guess, and I, I continue to see a distinction between, say, getting a quorum together to hold a meeting and this sort of decision, because I think it is going to necess, it's going to tend to exactly the kind of lobbying and discussing that Dr. Baker was talking about. I mean, I think if you say, well, I mean hypothetically, you say, I want to have an extra meeting, the answer to that's going to be, gee, I'm busy on Tuesday. It's not going to be, I think it's immoral to hold a meeting. Whereas if we had a grant proposal and I thought it was a terrible idea, well then I'd call Tony and I'd say, I think this is a terrible idea, well then I'm deliberating. What do I say? I think we should have a meeting and it's secret, I can't tell you why, but would you be willing to support that? And then I call somebody, and then I call down the tree. I just think you'd very, very easily get into functionally deliberating outside of a meeting.
You can ask for support to have it as an agenda item.
Oh, I get that you can. I'm saying, and I'm not suggesting that this is, you know, a violation of any, I'm talking about in principle, how this goes through, and it doesn't strike me as optimal good practice. That's, that's where I am.
It's not untypical for board policies to require more than one board member to, to hold something for.
Well, but the example you gave was to call a meeting, and that's a pretty neutral topic, and that doesn't involve any information at all necessarily. If you say, oh, I don't have an extraordinary meeting, then I just have to look at my calendar and see if I can make it. Whereas if you're sending.
Other comments, questions?
I'm curious, some, obviously no one has the answer to that, but the precedent, if we already have a precedence for a policy similar where there are at least three people required, I guess I'm thinking, kind of to Monica's point, I don't think we should have a disjointed where some policies is three, some policies is one. And I don't know what the time sensitivity is, but I guess I like to get a sense of that, because I do think it makes sense to have them to be consistent, but obviously we don't have that answer now, though.
Do a motion perhaps to table so we discuss possible open meeting problems, if that's your major concern, or, and check our other policies. Otherwise, I can call to question if I have some sense that the board is okay with the draft as it stands.
I'm happy to entertain tabling it, but just to be clear, I'm not suggesting there is inherently, structurally, an open meetings problem with this as drafted at all. There clearly isn't. I'm concerned about the act, how this will play out in terms of, we can trip the line with open meetings all the time. If we had a Christmas party and six of us showed up, it might be a violation of the Open Meeting Act. So the question is, if there's an old Supreme Court law, a Supreme Court case about the First Amendment that says if there's a barbed wire in the fog, you stay four, four yards away from where you think that barbed wire is, you don't go try to see how close you can get to it. So I'm not suggesting that this is going to cause violations of the Open Meetings Act, I'm just saying it's going to create situations in which that might more easily occur. But I'm happy to table it for, so we can have some further thought.
Could we?
We've deliberated, if it's simply about the one to three, we've deliberated it already. And so I feel comfortable calling to question unless you would like to do, look at more policies.
If we discover that other policies have that, could we change the language after we do a first vote on a first reading? Or no, we'd have to?
Yeah, you can do, wrote it on second reading, we could adopt it as first reading and revise for the second reading, absolutely. All right, Mr. Ross, why don't you take the vote?
3200, just exceptions to first reading, Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Legrand. Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Pastor Moody.
Yes.
President Fogg.
Yes.
That motion passes 9-0.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is Policy 2250. And if you go down to the last two pages of our, I noticed that the changes weren't added in the original document, but they are in the last two pages of our packet, page 37, I believe it is. We have the additions that was suggested in the work session.
Page 37?
Yep. For some reason, my pack, my screen is acting funny. So it's, the addition to the current policy is evaluation of the above categories will be based, right after the last category is underneath J, evaluation of the above categories will be based on data from the following sources as applicable, superintendent provided portfolio, written statement and supporting materials, board approved staff survey, board approved community survey, and board observation. Do I have a motion for second reading and an adoption of this policy?
So moved.
Any discussion deliberation regarding it?
Just so the public knows, this is, I think, a good addition, I think it was Dr. Baker's point, which was essentially that we had all these great things we wanted to evaluate the superintendent on, but then our criteria could have been feelings, or it came to us in a dream, rather than actually drilling down and saying, this is what we base it on, this is what we base it on. So this is an attempt to keep this board and future boards objective and qualit, qualitative and quantitative, but able to actually drive down and hold the superintendent to standards that they have reasons for, as opposed to emotional basis for. So I think it's a great idea, and I certainly thank Dr. Baker for making the point, I think it was well, well taken.
Yeah, and it codifies or puts into policy current practice. If there's no further comments, Mr. Ross, could you please take the vote?
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Legrand. Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Pastor Moody.
Yes.
President Fogg.
Yes.
Policy 2250, that adjustment passes 9-0.
Next on the agenda is our consent agenda, do I have motion for approval?
Some moves.
Support?
Support.
When you're ready, Mr. Ross.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yep.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Legrand. Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Pastor Moody.
Yes.
And President Fogg.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes 9-0.
We have no discussion items, public. We have no discussion items, public comment for non-agenda items.
Yes, we do have a few. We have Mr. Chuck Scala, Pastor Idella Williams, Mr. Adonis Moore, Mr. Jamari Marsley, Ms. Mary Bowens. So, Mr. Scala, please.
Merry Christmas. Happy holiday. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am an advocate for alternatives to suspensions and expulsions in school. I was here in the spring with some other people to talk about that issue. I, I'm also a volunteer at my local neighborhood school, or I was a volunteer. In, in a manifestation of ironic pushback, I myself got expelled. By expelled, I mean kicked out and, and prevented from returning to school as a volunteer. I've written a report. My main purpose here tonight is to deliver to the members of the board and superintendent a, a, a report that I have written. It incorporates my experience, but more broadly addresses the issue and, and how I see some policies could be changed to improve the situation for students who, who are being expelled. And, and within my limit, time limit, I, I would like to say, there's a lot of inertia. Grand Rapids Public Schools is a big bureaucracy. There's a lot of inertia. I'm sure that's been encountered before, and I commend the leadership of our district for the changes that have been made, the positive, in the right direction, changes that have been made, given that, that inertia. Another factor that I perceive in my local neighborhood school, where I have volunteered, is there's, you could say, a circle-the-wagons mentality. By that, I mean declining enrollments, school closings, reduced resources, pink slips for teachers have got people more inward acting than, than being expansive. That being said, inertia can be a positive thing, right? When we get things moving in the right direction, then they can keep going in that direction of their own, of their own momentum. That's what I'm advocating for with, with this report and with what I have to say to the board. And, and you know, when people are in that hunkered-down state, people can be resourceful about figuring out problems and, and what to do about that situation. And that, I think, gives reason for hope. So, if I may present these, I'd like to do that now.
We'll just take one and pass it down.
You can just give us the pile.
Pass it down.
We can pass them.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Oh, after the...
Am I done?
Yep, yep. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Pastor Idella Williams, and Mr. Adonis Moore, and Jamari Marsley, I believe.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. I thank you all for the opportunity to give us a chance to explain what is going on and what has not happened. Again, I'm Pastor Idella Williams, and I have some real concern about our school. Our children are being kicked out of school, put on probation for a hundred and eighty days suspension for a meeting that he didn't have an opportunity to be able to explain himself. This is Adonis Moore. He was kicked out of his community school, campus. He wants to tell you what happened in campus, that they kicked him out of school. Something needs to be done. Go ahead.
They said I had, they said I had stabbed a little boy in his eye when I was walking out of, out of a classroom at the end of the day, where I was going back to my classroom, and they said I stabbed a little boy in the eye, but there was another, there was another guy, another kid that stabbed him in the eye, that stabbed the student in the eye. And I went back to class, but when I went back upstairs, there was no blood on the floor that they said there was.
So, he didn't have an opportunity even to be able to explain to the board that came before to have the meeting, as again, you sent it to the wrong address. I asked you to send it to me. You didn't, so we didn't have an opportunity to even go before, to have that hearing. This other person is Jamari Massey. Tell them about your story. What school you in?
Casey. Um, my teacher wanted to make contact with him, and then he threw me to school.
And that's not the only thing. The fact is that his other teacher, Mr. Taylor, kept pushing him. He have had three heart surgery. He had to go back to the hospital because of the rudeness and the way that they are treated at school, at Oakley. We've talked to the principal, we have talked to the head of special education. She went out to the school with us to try to resolve the problem and the issue. We did ask them to not, to have Mr. Taylor around him, but they continually allowed Mr. Taylor at first to ride the bus with him, and he broke his headphone and pulled him off. These things should not be. So, last week, he would, they, he refused to go out of the class, so they grabbed him. He said that he did hit the teacher. Now, they're pressing charges against him because they said that he was violent and he pushed the teacher, and they suspended him from school. Now, if you being picked on all the time, what would you do? Would you not rebel? You get tired of being pushed on. They was pushing him into the timeout room, which he says is a little bitty closet that the other children urinate on the floor, and they wanted him to go in there. I think you all should go out and check some of these schools out. To sit on the board doesn't mean that just what comes, the reading and proposal, Policy thirty-two hundred, it doesn't make a difference if your children are not learning. It doesn't make a difference if they're not getting the education that you're getting funds for to be able to put out there. What good is it? Money is not the issue. Grants is not the issue. It's what is happening in the school and being suspended for so many days. And then we took him to...
Mr. Williams, your time's up if you want to make some concluding comments.
Okay. I'm saying, when are we going to have a meeting? The public separately from here, because I didn't understand nothing that you were saying tonight in regards to rule policy thirty-two. It wasn't even explained in thirty-five exactly what that rule was, that you have to have three people in order to vote on a grant of a hundred thousand dollars or whatever. Greek. Doesn't make any sense. But I'm going to wrap it up and say this. Today is December the fifteenth. At December the nineteenth, I would like to hear from the board, a comment as to what you are going to do, not what you're going to say, but what you're going to do about these children being expelled from school and checking out the school that you checked out. Let me know about it. Oakley Campus, the other school was Riverview, which they say is a charter school. Something needs to be done. They have a lot of problems, but the board is not solving it.
Thank you.
Could I get a, not a comment, a rule of what the boards are equipped and what are you supposed to do?
Thank you.
What are your processes?
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Miss Bullheys.
Oh, Miss Bullheys, sorry.
Bowens.
Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, Ms. Mary Bowens.
Bowens, excuse me.
Yeah. We can go up there.
Talking Bowens.
Oh, these kids are all...
Talking Mary Bowens.
It's Mary Bowens. This is my last evening at chair, so...
It's your last.
Ms. Bowens.
Excuse the mispronunciation, too.
Okay. You've got three years to figure it out.
She's used to it.
Yeah. Good evening. I see it as part of my job as the GRA president to reach out to the new hires, and in an attempt to do that, I try to stay ahead of the game by watching the board agenda to see the list of the new hires. And I guess I just wanted to inform you tonight that when I looked at the board minutes, the new hire list was from November third. So, I, I think there's something in the board minutes missing, and maybe I'm reading them wrong, but last, on the, on the first, those new hires were at a later date than the ones that were shown in this one. So, I just wanted to inform you because I do feel the need to connect and support our members, and that's one of the ways I find out where they are. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bowens. Uh, superintendent's comments?
Thank you, Dr. Faub. I would like to thank Deborah Perry and Vanessa Allen and our students for the holiday program was awesome. I also want to thank the board members for the transformation plan, because what you witnessed tonight with our students is really from the transformation plan, and what an awesome change we've had from, during the past three years. And other than that, just safe and happy holidays.
Slade, I'm going to say farewell to my partner when we started this journey together campaigning, and of course, I'm now re-elected, and he's going off to other things, but I will miss you very much, and you've been a great partner.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Dr. Randles.
Oh, you get your last statements, right? Yes, well, happy holidays, and anyone can see what our board policies are by looking on the website and going to GRPS.org and clicking on Board, so people can always feel free to have a lot of information and study on how this crazy mechanism works, because it doesn't always make a hundred percent sense. Happy holidays to everyone and great working with you, Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. LaGrange.
Yeah, John, it's certainly been nice to have you on the board. Don't be a stranger. I imagine we'll see each other again in the future sometime.
Reverend Mathias.
Bueno, feliz navidad a todo.
Father.
In my brief time knowing John, just to be able to pick his brain in terms of his knowledge has been really, for me, how much I have to learn, but also what I've learned just observing and being able to, to get to know you, so I really appreciate that. You know, our, our schools right now, many of them are really being blessed by a lot of the, the outpouring of generosity throughout our, our communities. Many people feel the needs of our families, the felt needs, and they respond. We get calls all the time in terms of, of hearing about what's going on and wanting to, wanting to meet that need. So, I really appreciate how the community responds to the needs and, among our family members in our community, and then respond to that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Gentlemen, Mr. Atkins, Mr. Jefferson, do you have anything tonight?
I'd just like to thank Mr. O'Connor for his service to this school district.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. O'Connor.
Are you going to miss him?
I said we just met him.
Pastor Moody.
Yes, I want to say thank you to John. Just say to you, John, walk a good path, and I know that we'll be seeing each other in the future, so this is not the end of our relationship, but it's much more that you and I need to be getting together and discussing and talking about. Also, I want to say to the young men who were here earlier, who are part of Union High School, who did a wonderful thing, and we continue to lift them up and lift up all the other students that throughout the Grand Rapids Public School system, yet has worked that we still must do, but that is one of the most plus things that can ever happen in our community, is to see young men take care of someone who's in need. To the music that was played on the screen with the wonderful holiday cards, that was a blessing to hear. It was wonderful, and I appreciate the musicians and the music directors for putting that piece together. It's always good to hear little kids sing.
That's great.
Little kids sing. So, have a happy holiday, everyone, and may good tidies be within each of your lives.
Well, it's just about John tonight, so, you know, I was reviewing, and I'll try to be short, you might want to put that timer on, so, anyway. You know, I was reviewing where we were at when John and Mo ran for office, and so if you really think about terms of office and what gets accomplished in terms of office, and you could probably look at lots of elected officials, mayors and presidents and, and city commissioners, et cetera, and think about where Grand Rapids Public Schools was at when John and Mo ran for election and where we're at now. And that election and the work that John did for the last four and a half years has made Grand Rapids Public Schools of what it is today, and it's pretty remarkable that the transformation of what we are now. And so, and, you know, we could not have done it, absolutely could not have done it without John O'Connor, and so, you know, it's, it's a, it's a loss, but I'm glad you were there.
Well, obviously, coming to a close of a calendar year, almost halfway through another school year, and of course, coming to an end of Mr. O'Connor's tenure here, and like everyone else, definitely sincerely thank you, definitely appreciate your guidance, your leadership, your peculiar sense of humor, and, you know, and all the things that, that go with, you know, appreciating you. And, and obviously, as we come to a close, I really want to give, you know, some degree of thanks to, I guess, the people that, you know, really doing this work every day, I guess particularly our building leaders, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Frost, Mr. Pasco. I definitely, you know, thank you guys, and obviously, everyone that supports you and gives you the guidance as well, and, you know, we turn this thing around slowly but surely one day at a time, and, and everyone asks me, you know, "How's it going with GRPS?" I say, "It's better than it was yesterday," and I truly believe that, and I truly believe what everyone here and everyone out there, that, you know, every day it does get better. So, enjoy your well-needed break, and thank you very much for all your service.
I just want to do a shout-out again to Deborah Perry and Vanessa Allen. The kids were just, it was beautiful out there. It really was beautiful, and I felt badly I didn't give them a proper shout-out when they were here, but it was great. It was a wonderful way to start the evening, and, Mr. O'Connor, hmm, you know, when I first met you, and I thought, "Who is this young man, barely, just young man, no kids, why does he want to run for the board?" I was incredibly suspect of you. I was trying to size you up, and you were very modest, and I started sizing you up and got more and more and more impressed when I saw the decisions you made and continued to make for engagement, for commitment, for responsibility. I saw you learn, I saw you grow, I saw you change your mind, admit your mistakes, I saw you lead, I saw you be tough and lead when no one was behind you, and you said, "No, this isn't the right thing. This is the right thing." You pushed me, you pushed everybody on this board. Anybody, any organization would be absolutely lucky to have you behind it. You're going to be missed greatly. So, you did the last word tonight, Mr. O'Connor.
I don't go too long.
I have so much to say at the end of these meetings.
The phrase is drinks on me.
What's that?
It means Kool-Aid.
All right. Well, July fourth, two thousand and eleven, I'm live. The headline reads, quote, "You Break It, You Own It. New GRPS majority must show that has a plan beyond getting rid of Bernard Taylor." Well, ladies and gentlemen, we didn't break anything. In fact, I think it was pretty broken when I got here. Four and a half years later, as a member of this body, I leave with my head held high because we did, we did own it. We did have a plan, and at least we had some good luck and a lot of support in developing one. It's not to say that the work here is done, far from it, but as my term of service on this board adds, I know in my heart and in my mind that GRPS is a better institution today than when I arrived. And with the continued leadership of this Board of Education, the superintendent, our staff, GRPS is going to continue to transform, to innovate, and to make a difference in the lives of children in Grand Rapids. As my term of service on this board adds, I know in my heart and in my mind that GRPS is a better institution today than when I arrived. And with the continued leadership of this board of education, the superintendent, our staff, GRPS is going to continue to transform, to innovate, and to make a difference in the lives of children in Grand Rapids. First, I gotta say thank you to Commissioner Schaper, my friend Ed Kettle. Without their encouragement and persuasion, I probably never would have done this. In fact, they asked me once to do it, and I told them no. But they asked again, and I said yes. And in all honesty, having had the privilege of serving this board is one of the greatest experiences of my life. And just so you know, if you want to convince a friend to commit four of their, four plus years of their life to public service, just gotta take them out for lunch, buy them some tacos. Don't let them leave the table until they say yes. Dr. Faub, Dr. Baker, that's where it all began, right? Thought you guys know this had been possible. You guys demonstrated immense muscle leadership, courage and conviction. You stood your ground when it wasn't practical to do so. You fought back fearlessly, and when you, even when you knew you'd end up on the losing end of things. And more importantly, you stuck it out. Heck, you even signed up for four more years. Thank you both for being mentors and friends. I couldn't have done this without you guys. Ms. Slade, Mr. Ross, Dr. Randles, you made up that majority, they were so scared, and for good reason, I might add. It took all of us getting elected to pull this thing off and start creating the turn around we were experiencing today. Thank you for having the courage to run for office when you did, and for allowing me to be part of your winning team. Pastor Moody, Mr. Legrand, Reverend Mathias, you guys got off easy. Really though, thank you.
That was a good chat.
That's great.
Thank you for being the thoughtful leaders that you are, and for your continued commitment to guiding GRPS through this growth and continued success. Superintendent Neal, thank you for your willingness to listen, for your thoughtfulness and leadership, and for your never-waiting commitment to do what's right. I always appreciate that you had an open door and an open mind to make change. Please keep doing what you do. To our teachers and staff, thanks for sticking with us, for sticking with our children, and for always trying to make a difference. I know you're underpaid, underappreciated, and overworked, but you keep coming back for more because I know you believe in the future at GRPS. Now more than ever, Grand Rapids needs you, our children and families need you. To my beautiful wife Monica, here tonight. Thanks for being by my side through all this. Your love and support and understanding me was worth it. And finally, to the people of Grand Rapids, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to serve and represent you on this board. This has been an amazing experience, one I'll never forget. Like I mentioned, public service doesn't end today. I look forward to new opportunities to serve and help make a difference in our community. Thank you all.
Awesome. Meeting adjourned.